Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. We have no exemplary people who we are recognizing tonight. I really don't have anything in the chairman's report, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thanks, Jerry. Jack, do you want to talk about we have a retirement on the agenda to approve?
Yeah, we have Donna Aiken, Secretary Jackie Hollow, who just submitted for her retirement.
All right. And when is that effective again? I think I saw it, but...
I believe it's the end of the school year.
Okay.
April.
Is it April? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, anybody have any questions? All right, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. And first up is our Massey School Board representatives.
Hi, so this Wednesday, the early presenters for Capstone will be presenting. Unlike in previous years, there will not be a half day. However, seniors who are presenting will be dismissed from eighth period to prepare for the presentations. I am one of those presenters, so wish me luck with that. The Hurricane Florence donation box is doing exceptionally well right now. It has already been cleared out twice, which is awesome. So that's going to be continuing for a few more weeks. Coming up on the weekend of October 26th will be a no homework weekend to allow for seniors finishing college applications, to finish those up and send those in. Michelle and I are two of those seniors, so we're really looking forward to that. And we're really grateful for that time. So thank you to the board for allowing that homework policy to pass.
So we have come up with our themes for Spirit Week at the last student council meeting. So on Monday, we're having a country versus country club. So our lowerclassmen are going to be dressing up in Western-style clothing while the upperclassmen are going for a preppy look. Tuesday, we will be having an animal day where everybody will be dressing up as their favorite animals. And Wednesday is Color Day by grade. Thursday, each grade will be having a different theme. So our freshmen will be wearing sports jerseys. Our sophomores will be wearing 80s-style clothing. Juniors will be in superhero, and seniors are wearing camo. And then Friday is Massey Spirit Day, so we'll all be decked out in our Massey apparel. And this past weekend, we had two teams participating in the Yale Physics Olympics. So our teams had so much fun, and they were able to apply their knowledge in physics and learn new information as well. And also last Friday, we had a Panther Pride Day. So our staff and our students dressed up in Massey apparel. And we all had so much fun enjoying the festivities and showing our spirit.
We had a long advisory period last week, and for our junior class, we had a texting and driving seminar, which I thought to be very moving, as I am a new driver. I don't text and drive myself, but I'm sure it was a wake-up call for the kids who do. Also, the National Honor Society induction will take place on November 1st at the Stone Barn for our junior and senior classes, as letters were sent out the other day for their acceptance. And our girls soccer team is doing exceptionally well with a record of 11-2 and 1, with their most recent wins being against New Milford and Eastslime, being 2-1 and 8-1, respectively.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any committee reports this evening? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
So first, we have the review of the fund activity. Gabby, you want to talk us through that?
Sure, just quickly, the auditors were in town. They're actually still in town, but they spent, what, three days at the Board of Ed last week. Doesn't mean that they're actually done with us. Now, they're just going to ask us questions. But basically, when they're on site, they'll pull invoices, they'll pull different kinds of records, they'll check things with us, and then they go off and do a lot of stuff online. Because we actually upload, as opposed to, if any of you are familiar with audit, as opposed to the old days where they actually looked at things. Nowadays, we upload a lot of files to a portal, for them to secure a portal. Insurance, I know that's always the hot topic. We seem to be trending a little bit better, not a lot, just a little bit. As it says in your board pack, we currently have about $1.1 million in claims, over $25,000. And we had, compared to last year, we had about $1.2. I think the interesting thing that I'm seeing is that this year, we only have two claims that are running at over $100,000, whereas last year, we had four claims at this point. So I don't know if that's a sign of a turnaround, or if it's just an anomaly. And the budget module is open. I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit later about how we actually look and start preparing the budget. But we opened the budget module last week for 2020, which seems really far away right now. I guess it's not.
Thanks, Gabby. And then an update on the Monroe Elementary Principals hiring process for Plaistev Kibachi. We've received 43 applications to date, so there's a lot of interest in the position. That's internal and external. And we put together our interview committee, and currently, what we have is three central office staff comprised of Joe, Sheila, and myself, two elementary principals, Becky and Bruce. We have five teachers representing various grade levels and disciplines. We have two parents. We have a school secretary, Donna as board chair. And then one of the questions for the board tonight is we would like to get one or two more board members to be on the committee. Alan? Thank you. Anybody else interested?
I'll do it, Jack.
Okay, Alan, Jerry, thank you both. So we'll have three Board of Ed members on there. And the, we anticipate that the interviews will be scheduled for the beginning of November. And my hope is that the whole process will be complete before the holidays. So we'll be able to announce somebody at that point, and then start to work on transition plan after we get back from the holidays. And just wanted to remind the board that we have our insurance workshop. For those of you that are on that, Thursday, October 25th. As Gabby had mentioned, this is significant work for us. And we had a really good first meeting, a lot of good dialogue about our insurance plans. Our next meeting is going to include a lot about finances. And specifically, it will show projections for both our current plan, as well as the state partnership plan. So we'll get some good reference data about what that will look like over time. Just like all other projections, first year will be more accurate, second year less so, third year less so. But we're going to look at three years out in advance and get a good idea of what costs and benefits will look like over time. In addition, it will include information about what it looks like for each one of the staff in the district. If you're someone who uses a lot of claims, what real costs look like. If you're medium use for claims, what will that look like in low claims? So that way, from a staff standpoint, we'll have good clarity about cost to the individual. So that work is moving forward. And then lastly, on the 29th, we have our workshop to work together with the administrative team, the Board of Ed and the administrative team, on the action plans within our goals and action plans. And we have draft that's really pretty clean right now, that we're looking forward to sharing with the board, working together with the board to make edits to that and make that a living document that will guide us for the next three years to come. So again, that's the 29th, Monday, the 29th, 6:30 PM, right here. We'll have food for that meeting. And like our last workshop, we'll have everybody working together and looking forward to a productive evening with that.
And we'll be splitting up again into...
Correct.
Smaller working groups.
Even distribution.
Correct. All right, anybody have any questions for Jack? All right, we will move on to our presentation on the budget and insurance.
Do you want to put a clicker there for it?
Well, it's right here.
Okay. Sure.
So... Thanks, Jack. I don't want to take Lisa's presentation, because I wouldn't know what it is. So I just wanted to really, to give you an oversight, an overview of how we actually build the budget. We've given you a timeline in the past, and you guys are always here in December and January and February, March, where we talk actively about the budget. But we just wanted to tell you a little bit more about how we actually go through and build the budget. This is just different parts of the budget that we look at. We look at costs, we look at needs, we look at discretionary spending. We look at student needs, we look at administration, we look at special education, fixed cost, insurance, transportation, utilities. I just did like a little funky, or it'll think, because I don't know. So the creation of the budget, we basically begin from ground up. We, it's not really, it's a zero-based budget in that we pretty much tell everybody, you have to come in with a 0% increase. That's really how we look at it. And then after that, we look to see, can we trim things? Where do we need to add things? Each department creates their own budget based on their anticipated needs. This includes special education, the individual schools, technology, curriculum, human resources, and athletics. What do they have to look at? They have to look at whatever new curricular needs they are. Those are things that go through Curriculum Council. It might involve new textbooks, because the old texts are no longer relevant, or they're not what we need. Lisa's going to talk to you about something in a little bit about world language curriculum. We also look at what's professional development. What do we need for our teachers? You know, are we going to, do we continue with teachers' colleges? Is there something newer? Is there a new initiative that we think would really suit our district? Next-generation science standards, we've been talking about this. Sheila Casinelli has talked to you about this for several years now, and this is finally coming to fruition. So you'll see a lot more coming from Sheila and Jim Stazl about science. So that's one thing to keep in mind also, as we develop the budget. One-to-one computers. Jack has spoken to you about this in the past. There was a pilot, you know, how does that work? Did it work? Are we going to continue with that? If we do continue with something like that, you know, the cost of the actual computers that we would have to provide for students. The teacher computer replacement cycle, we just bought laptops for all of Massey. So in two years, I believe, it is the...
Elementary schools.
Elementary schools will be next on tap. Right, and so for Massey, I believe we purchased somewhere about 100?
Yeah, about 120.
120, 120 laptops. All right. And then specialized instruction. You know, that's not, that's special ed, it's out placements, it's the transportation related to that. Are students outplaced, or are they serviced here in-house? How is that done? What does that look like? And what does that cost? Other parts of the budget that obviously are looked at is the payroll budget. That's created utilizing the various contracts that are out there. We have certain contracts that are set for a number of years. So through 2020, teachers, maintenance, and secretaries. And then 2021, for paras, nurses, librarians, and administrators. Other staff follow different types of contracts. We have some staff that follow the secretarial contract, we have some that follow teachers, we have some that follow administrators. And when I say follow, it means their benefits are the same type, and their GWIs will more than likely be in that range, that some of those contracts are. And then we also have utilities and transportation. Utilities, sometimes the rates are locked in, like for example, natural gas, we have locked in through June of 2020. So that's kind of nice, we have a set rate, and we're in a consortium for natural gas. Heating oil is locked in annually, depending upon a different consortium. That is now locked in for the rest of this year. We just locked in on Saturday. Electricity is also locked in. And then transportation, we have a contract through 2022 with All-Star. And that's a five-year contract. So that really helps in the sense that we don't have to guess what the increases will be. Unfortunately, things like transportation, that does increase on an annual basis. Natural gas, heating oil, electricity, those are market-driven. Heating oil, you know, that was a little interesting this year. We were hoping to get a lock-in similar to where we were last year, but I don't know if you follow the markets at all, but the oil prices have gone up dramatically over the course of the summer. We got a little bit of a reprieve the last few days when the stock market went down. The oil market also went down, so we were able to lock in. So it's always, it's always a little interesting. And then everybody has to meet with Jack, Joe, and myself, and we discuss what they would like, what they need, what they really want. We look at contracted rates versus the cost of, cost increases. We look at cost of living for GWI. As you know, we put a graph in the budget every year that looks at inflation versus what our budget's at. And we've traditionally been lower than the rate of inflation, except for a couple of years. This year, we're also going to look at the social security cost of living increase that was given, which was around, around 2.5%. Don't hold me on that exactly, but it was somewhere in there. We also have to look at our facilities, our infrastructure. We have buildings that are over 50 years old in a lot of cases, and they have lots of, there's always something that needs to be fixed and needs to be maintained. We don't have any large roof projects this summer. And actually, here at Massey, we're looking to extend our ability to use the current underground oil tank for another 10 years. There's an allowance with the state to do that. And we have our, we have Fasen O'Neill, who manages our underground storage tanks, looking into that for us. So hopefully, we can extend that for 10 years. And then there's always technology, whether it's teacher, whether it's student, whether it's district. There were issues with the Wi-Fi that were upgraded this past year. So hopefully, that'll help both students and staff across the district. So insurance, as Jack has mentioned, we have the insurance meeting on the 25th. But in addition to medical, we also have workman's comp and liability insurance. As you know, our medical insurance is created in partnership with Brown &amp; Brown and Cigna. And we don't receive the final renewals on that until traditionally April, May, somewhere in that time range, which sort of makes budgeting a little difficult. We have a really vague, broad, general idea of what we, what we're going to increase on the Board of Ed side. But we just, we just don't know. It's based on experience, and since we don't have this current year experience, obviously not, because we're only in October, we don't have the experience yet for this year. Insurance carriers do include the full year when they do their renewals. Workman's comp is a similar thing as is liability. We review that with Kerma. We actually had a review with Kerma last week with the town. The Board of Ed and the town are in that together. We've been in, we've been with Kerma since 2010, and that's worked out pretty well for us. You know, again, we attempt to minimize the budget impact, but working with Kerma. And again, we're working on a two-year timeline. They give us their renewals in April, so we kind of are looking at, you know, what our experience has been, and again, we won't know that experience until the year is completed. But we've pushed Kerma. Kerma's been a little bit easier to push in terms of getting us numbers than the medical insurance has. It's just, they seem to be a little bit easier to work with than that. And maybe it's also because our claims aren't so catastrophic in some cases. And the renewal for that also traditionally comes in April. But like I said, we've been able to kind of push them along a little bit. And this is just the budget calendar. We presented this to you two board meetings ago, and I just wanted to put it back there just to remind you guys what our timeframe is and what the overall timeline is. And as you can see, December 3rd, you'll have the Board of Ed meeting where the budget is presented to the public. And then we'll have another workshop on the 10th. And that's kind of our budget and how we sort of work through it.
Does anybody have any questions? I think next up is Lisa, right?
Yes, it is, I believe so.
So I think, just stay here.
Sure, there's a clicker right there.
I have a proposal for new materials for French and Spanish for Level 4. 4 in French and Spanish, and Level 5, our college prep curriculum in Spanish. The reason, if you want to go with, the texts are D'Arcor and Cinderos. And I'll explain the Spanish series. This would be the beginning, the beginning of implementing a new series in French and Spanish for all levels. The Spanish series has five different textbooks, probably because Spanish is usually a larger program, and the textbook publishers can, can market it a little bit. The French series has three books, which does not mean that we're buying a Level 3 book for a Level 4 course. If you look at the number of units, Cinderos 1 through 4 has 24 units, and the French series within three texts has 25 units. So it's the same amount of material, it's just fewer books. And that's probably because French series don't, or French programs don't tend to be as large. So they market it a little differently, but it's essentially the same idea. And if you look at the physical thickness of the book, the French book is bigger than the Spanish. So if you want to move to the next slide, the reason that the department needs new materials is that our current texts are out of print and have been out of print for a while. So we've been replacing with used texts. The online access to the text is no longer supported. It was, I asked the publisher for a renewal that I've been doing annually for, I think, $5, because it's so old. And they informed me that they're not even allowing new access on a yearly basis. So I asked again, and I got, I got a senior extension so that we still have the online version for this year. But next year, there, there will not be, you know, students won't be able to access the text online. So these, I believe, we integrated the new series in 2007, or the series that we're currently using in 2007. Since then, instruction and the approach to language acquisition in general has changed significantly, including the college board's AP programs. These French and Spanish tests were redesigned in 2012. The Apple test that all students take is speaking and listening, which leads to the seal of bili literacy, the entire approach that is no longer grammar-focused, that we all studied with, but really using the language. And instruction has to change because of that, and materials change. The older texts still follow a more, much more traditional format, and we've been supplementing a lot within the department. These texts that we chose are the lower-level basis for what we have been using in Levels 5, 6, University of Connecticut courses and AP, since we integrated those starting in 2012. The, the program has been successful. The students who use the materials like it, it's, it makes sense for what they're ultimately being asked to do and the skills that they're being asked to, to show. So we did collect a number of sample texts from different publishers. We sent out, I sent out an email to every district in Connecticut, and the answer we got was, of those who answered me, about 70% who have purchased texts in the last few years have gone with, with this publisher. Vista is the publisher, and the, the company only produces or publishes world language textbooks. That is their focus, that's what they do. All of the upper-level books that we've bought in the last three or four years have been from Vista. I've spoken with a couple of other world language departments who use it, and they said it feels perfectly. Everybody's been happy. The Spanish 5 college prep program has grown, or has, is a fairly new addition to the program as enrollment increases. Our enrollment has increased in upper levels significantly over the last three or four years. So because there is a Level 5 text available, it's a perfect fit for students who aren't seeking college credit for our Level 5 program. And then if you want to go to the last slide, what the program does in general is it, it follows six basic themes. And if you think about topics, I'm not sure that there would be anything that wouldn't fit into one of these broad themes. But what it does nicely is scaffold topics and content for students. For example, the Level 1 Spanish text talks about classes, which is a natural topic, which subjects you take, teachers, times, days. In Level 2, there's a new grammatical concept introduced through flexive verbs, and you talk about your daily routine. So you revisit classes that you take at certain times and use it in new ways. In Level 3, there's a discussion of professions, and embedded in that is what preparation do you need for a profession? So again, you're, you're recycling what you've learned about education and that vocabulary and those structures. In Level 4, you discuss what you used to do, or what you did. So you're using the same materials, but now to talk about past events. And then Levels 5 and AP, you start talking about topics on a more current events or social level. A position paper on should there be an entrance exam for colleges, SATs? Should, what governmental intervention for tuition should exist, if any? And so you, you're still using the same materials and revisiting the same ideas on a much more sophisticated level. And the entire cost for online and a classroom set of print texts for all three levels is $19,388 at current prices. And that would be the French, Spanish Levels 4 and 5.
Just to let you know too, because one of the questions that I anticipate is what's the cost if we go purely electronic as opposed to text? And this is, all the publishers unfortunately are playing this game. It's actually more expensive if we went digital only, as opposed to getting digital in the book. What was the difference?
It's, it's about a $10 difference, but if we only go digital, we have to renew every six years. So if we have the print text, at least we've got, you know, something that students, students can use.
So they're making it difficult for schools that way?
Remember that last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty much the case in every subject.
And are we building this into next year's budget?
Next year's budget, correct.
Any other questions? All right, well, this is a first review. We will have a second review and a vote anticipated at our next meeting. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Sorry, I went to sleep. All right. So next up is, we have no old business, so next up will be the field trip.
So we have Ben Strange here and Monica Gagnon. If we can bring them up and share a little bit about the trip?
Absolutely, come on down.
Good evening. I'm Ben Strange, Latin and political science and economics at the moment. And this is Monica Gagnon, who is an art teacher here at Massey, who has traveled on trips that I have led since 2013. And over here, Carol Connery is an APRN who teaches and works at Yale New Haven and teaches at Yale University. She has been on three of our trips, including one on which she had the occasion to save someone's life. It was not one of our route. Another passenger on the plane back from Germany in 2008. So what we're proposing is one of the more popular tours offered by EF Educational Tours, a company that I have worked with since 1986 in putting together travel for students. With EF, I have taken students to 25 countries in that time on 17 different tours. And the one that we're talking about is called Bell Italia. And the itinerary is roughly this. We fly into Milan, and we go from there to Verona on our way to Venice, where we spend a couple of days. And then we go south from Venice. I hope we'll have a chance to stop at Ravenna, that's not always the case. And go to Florence, crossing the mountains into Tuscany. Couple of days in Florence, and then we head down to Rome by way of Assisi, where we visit the Basilica of St. Francis. And in Rome, we spend a couple of days. And then the end of the tour is an overnight in Sorrento, which is convenient to the ruins at Pompeii and the Isle of Capri. And this will take place during the April break. Because of the length of the tour, it is likely that students will miss one day of school, either the Friday before or the Tuesday after, we're not exactly sure which one. The dates will not be set until we have our full complement enrolled, which will be around the end of November. Uh, the dates will not be set until we have our full complement enrolled, which will be around the end of November. By January, we will have airline arrangements made. By early to mid February, the hotels will be locked in place and then will be set. So I'm here to, uh, answer any questions anybody has about, um, our experience in taking students overseas. Um, among the three of us, we've taken them to Greece, um, Austria, Switzerland, Liechtenstein, uh, Germany, Japan, Italy, we did Southern Italy four years ago, uh, Germany and France. And China. Um, I can tell you the the real difference between taking students to Europe and taking them to Asia is that when you go to Asia, everybody wants to go to bed right away. And when you take them to Europe, one of the things we'll be dealing with as always is that the body tricks the person who has it into thinking that it's still early when actually it's not. But we want them to see as much as possible, these are not strictly speaking vacations. They are enjoyable, um, I think the students have always had a great time on them. But you get up early and you're going all day. And it's a very well put together, well thought out, integrated educational tour with professional guides in the cities and at special venues. So what 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 else can I add to that?
So I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so this, the booking of the trip itself has all the mechanisms that this Board of Education policy has in effect for, God forbid, something happens and there is some sort of terrorist attack beforehand where we would need to cancel the trip that, you know, the mechanism for people to then get out of it and get reimbursed?
Well, here's what the companies that I have worked with offer. Um, if the State Department issues a warning against travel to a particular country, then every penny comes back to the students and their parents at the expense of the company. Because by February, a lot of money has already been spent on the tour in a way that it can't be returned. But if there's an international incident and it's unsafe to travel to a country, that tour is understandably, um, blocked out. I can I can give you a concrete example, it has not happened to us.
Right, but I'm what I'm saying is the Board of Education has a very specific policy that states, um, that the the parents, I guess, maybe my wording is different. The parents are being forced to have to buy trip insurance in case the board, the superintendent and the board chair decides that an unsafe environment has come up because of a terror attack and we cancel the trip is, I guess, a better statement.
Okay. As opposed to a declaration by the Department of State or anybody else? Just if there was a concern about it, that there would have to be insurance for the the parents to go back out?
Correct, so my question is, does this incorporate the mandatory insurance that the Board of Education requires that every parent pay for in case that situation happens?
I'll have to find out because what I have known of the insurance plan has been for cases such as happened in oh eight with one of our students who got a stomach bug the day before the trip, which was terribly disappointing for her. But she got all the money back because that kind of thing is covered under the insurance.
Right, but since the the issue happened a number of years ago, the Board of, um, the Monroe Board of Education has completely revamped and updated our policy for specific mechanisms put into effect. And one of those is that every parent has to buy trip insurance, cancellation insurance in case we, as the Board of Education and the superintendent, need to cancel a trip because something has happened in the world and we don't feel it's safe for the kids to travel. So that's my question. This includes that the parents have to buy that in in accordance with the Mon- Monroe Board of Education's policy.
Right.
You recall that from a few years back, right? We we nixed one of the trips and if we had gone down that path too far, the kids would have been out the money. So hence the need for the insurance.
Correct.
I wasn't I wasn't aware that there had been a canceled trip.
Well, no, we didn't ca- we didn't approve a trip.
We didn't improve a trip, okay.
Correct, not cancel a trip, but we didn't approve a trip. And when the incident happened, when was that, uh?
I think if I remember it too, there was concern about whether or not to have one go on. And then that begged the question of, okay, how do we insure so that families wouldn't be in a situation? If if there was concern by the board and the superintendent about a trip moving forward, who is financially responsible? That that's what begged the whole question about having the insurance to prevent that from occurring.
Right, so the Board of Education completely put in a new policy for any sort of trips that require certain certain things. And one of the mechanisms that we put in is that every parent must buy trip insurance.
Okay, well, i- it's a matter of definition and what what I'm hearing about trip insurance is not what is typically thought of as trip insurance by the companies that do the trips. But what I can do is find out and I can do that rather readily.
Right, because that we need to make ensure that that is in place before we can approve anything and have proof that the parents ha- are is as part of the cost of the trip, that includes the parents having to buy the trip insurance.
Okay, I can find out about that.
So like, right.
Trip insurance for any any cancellation.
Right.
Correct, any cancellation so that we because we reserve the right under our policy to cancel a ship. If we, if something happens in February and a- a- and even though the State Department may have not issued any sort of travel warning, if we feel it's unsafe, we reserve the right in our policy to say this trip isn't happening, like a lot of districts did. What was that, three years ago when that whole terrorist thing happened?
Right.
What?
I think it was the Paris bombings.
Yes.
There was an attack in Paris, December of two thousand fifteen, yeah.
Correct, and we had, we did not cancel our trip, but Jim and I were like back and forth and was very uneasy about sending those because of the financial burden of canceling it. But like a lot of other districts went and canceled it and that's when we wrote our policy.
Yeah, the policies are are posted on the board's website, obviously.
I do remember when we did some exploration, there were external companies too that provided this insurance as an add-on.
Okay, well, I I will find out about that, um, tomorrow or the next day and get back to you.
Perfect.
Great.
Anybody have other questions? Oh, thanks, Alan.
I have a question about their, um, they call it the peace of mind program. Um, in case there's some unforeseen circumstances. It says, cancel your tour forty-five days or more prior to departure. Cancel your tour and all travelers will receive a transferable travel voucher. What's, do you know what that means?
That means that they would have a voucher that would be good for another EF tour to a different location. And the company is interested, uh, first and foremost in educating, but doing so safely. Um, the example that, um, I always give is that there was a a school in Louisiana seven years ago who had made all their plans and set up a tour to Egypt. So the students were going to visit, uh, Cairo, Alexandria and Giza and the pyramids and down as far as Karnak. Well, that was two thousand eleven and that was the year of the Arab Spring. Uprisings in the eastern north part of Africa, several countries were involved, including Egypt. So they quickly re-shifted themselves to another tour, nothing hastily organized. This was another tour that had been completely articulated and worked out to Japan. It turned out to be an unfortunate year to shift to Japan because in March, the earthquake and tsunami struck and there were problems at the Fukushima Daiichi nuclear plant. So they didn't want to go to Japan, so quickly working because they had less than a month, they routed the students to a tour to France. And most of the students were able and willing to go and those who were not were given refunds. But the company is interested in sending students places where they are not going to be part of headlines. See where headlines have been made, but not make them themselves.
Yeah, and the insurance is just a a means to avoid those issues.
Understandably.
Right. Shannon?
How many students in chaperones do you anticipate?
Well, with Italy, the last time we did this was two thousand fourteen. It was a different itinerary. We started in Rome and went south as far as Syracuse and Palermo. Um, and we wound up with forty-two, which meant that we had seven adults total going with them because it's a one to six ratio that we feel comfortable with. We also, uh, don't simply count heads when we're out and about. We have, um, organized kids into what we call pods so that each chaperone would have five or six that he or she would be in charge of. And if we're meeting up at the end of a lunch break in a town square and I'm a a pod leader, I'm counting the kids I've got, that doesn't take long. And as a group leader, I'm looking at the adults and so the whole thing is done very quickly, even if we have a large number.
You said approximately twelve chaperones, you're like including you three and then maybe an additional nine?
Well, depending on how many students go, I don't think there would be quite that many chaperones. Um, if if anything, I've I've never actually had a a tour where we had to cap it, but I'm not interested in a tour in which I have a route that's going to be on two different buses. So once it gets up to about forty-eight, forty-nine, somewhere in there, we're just going to, uh, ask the company to close it off because it might become unmanageable. And if we have just one tour bus, then we can easily account for everybody every time we take a break or go to see something.
I just missed the part where you said, you, how many chaperones, so if you're gonna-
One to six.
One to six.
So if we have, if we have forty-eight students, we'll have eight adults going along.
Okay, you three and then maybe five?
You know, with Italy, it doesn't seem to be hard to find people who want to be a chaperone. Um, Iceland was a little bit more tricky. And China.
Great, anybody else have any questions? All right, so if you can just get, make sure about the trip insurance?
Certainly.
Um, and then this will be on our agenda for our next board meeting as a second review and a vote anticipated.
And I'll also get a price on that so that-
Perfect.
We can nail it down exactly.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are the, um, the policies now open?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, we, there was a little snafu, the, if you hit on the link, it wasn't opening before, but Jack has fixed that. So we are moving on to policies, first review, and George, you're up.
Okay, so, uh, there's four here, five, one, four, one dot four. Uh, that's regarding report of child abuse or neglect. And it just makes a couple of modifications to the terminology and adds behavioral analysts to the set of identified employees that are required to be mandated reporters of it if they witness it. So, um, all of the the different roles within this, uh, policy have that requirement to just go ahead and and report it. Uh, the next one is, and that was a CAE, right? Uh, based on a change in in state law. Uh, next one is, I'm trying to keep up with this here. The next one is the curriculum?
Yeah. Six one four ten?
All right, so that's, uh, six one four two. So the curriculum, so there's a, there's some additions to, uh, the the curriculum that we need to, uh, adopt. Thankfully in here, there's a lot of stuff, yes, that's that's mandatory, such as math and science. Uh, but then they leave it up to us to, um, decide whether or not we want to do some of the the optional stuff. There's there's nine items in here that are listed as optional. So the district can choose and I'm assuming the curriculum committee and the administration will get together to figure out what we're going to implement and what we're not going to. But there's, 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 there were a couple of, the one that stood out to me in terms of mandatory was the, um-
Genocide education.
The genocide education, Holocaust and genocide education. Beyond that, you know, there's some some stuff around health and safety and whatnot. But, um, again, there's a lot of optional stuff there too. Uh, the thirty-five twenty. Okay, this was, this is regarding any kind of software title that we, um, that we, uh, contract for. And it basically is the state's policy, okay, around what that what that supplier of the software or manufacturer of the software needs to abide by in terms of their software security and data privacy considerations. So this is just a a standard, uh, set of terms that we provide those software suppliers before we can engage in a contract with them.
And this looks like it's a brand new policy?
Yeah.
And is that something that's, this has been mandated by the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then the lastly is the acceptable use, which is, uh, both, um, a combo of CAE and OUR policy. We kind of splice them together, right? But, uh, in addition to, you know, augmenting some of the language that's there, we also update it to to make it, you know, current, uh, current technology definition as opposed to older, um, terminology.
And there is some impact of that, um, student data privacy law within this too, a little bit.
Any problems with that, like last time, or is it okay?
Uh, it's better this time. I actually have a meeting on Tuesday with the Western Connecticut superintendents and the local legislators to talk a little more about the unfunded mandates that came with that and improved. But there's still some unfunded mandates within districts. So it's it's getting better, um, and I I think it's still going to get better after our dialogue with the legislators. We're getting there.
All right, and is there still things that it just can't be complied with or has that gotten better too?
That's gotten better too. There were big, big players that wouldn't sign on two years ago when it presented, remember?
Correct.
Now the big players like Google and Apple and Khan Academy, one by one, are now coming on to sign on. So it's much, much better. The only area that we're worried about at this point is areas where, um, like Bill McDonough's classes, where, um, I've shared with the state and others that, um, this, those software applications aren't educational, they're professional because our students are, you know, moving into the workforce. And because that they don't, they don't want to comply with K-12 because they're professional applications, they don't care about our market. So one of the points that I've made is, look, our our purpose is to prepare kids for the future and they love this software and it should be compliant. It's a place where there should be an exemption. So that's getting a little bit of traction and I'm hoping that'll change.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on any of these? All right, then we, these will again be up for our second review and vote anticipated on our next meeting. Um, do we have anything else before we move on to adjournment? All right, here in Nantucket, I have a motion to adjourn, thank you. Second, thank you, Jerry, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Thank you. Joey, this is your mail here.